I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Dallas Center Grimes School Board to order. Roll call please, Ms. Swerthman.
Director Baker-Curtis?
Here.
Director Dickinson?
Here.
Director Fiala?
Here.
Director Malmberg?
Here.
Director Carpenter?
Here.
Director McNace?
Here.
Director Vandervelden?
Here.
I'll acknowledge a quorum. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our visitors this evening. I believe we have one person registered to speak, and I believe you have a written comment as well.
I have one written statement.
Okay. Before we get into that, I've got a brief statement that we typically read. We'll now open the floor for public comment. I think we have one written statement and one person to present on the docket tonight. I'd like to welcome you all to the board meeting and thank you for your willingness to speak to us. Per Board Policy 213, citizens wishing to address the board during public comment must notify the board secretary prior to the board meeting. Public comment is a time set aside for community input, but the board will not discuss or take any action on any matter during public comment. Please limit your comment to five minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. When you do speak, we ask that you come up to the podium and speak into the microphones so that we can hear you. Please begin by stating your name and your city of residence. We would ask that when speakers are addressing us, that everyone will maintain professional decorum, listen and refrain from any disruption. Any person who creates a disruption may be asked to leave the meeting. I want to also remind all speakers that any comments that may be made during public comment are done at the risk of the person making the comment, and that the district will not be responsible for any defamatory or potentially defamatory statements which may be made when you're called to speak. Thank you for your support of our school district. And now, we'll have the written statement first, and then Ms. Perez following.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Will Rubel, and I'm a resident of Grimes. I'd like to share a concern regarding the upcoming vote on the facility use agreement with New Hope Assembly of God specifically regarding a potential conflict of interest involving board member Brandon McNace. To be clear, I have no reason to believe Mr. McNace will disregard school board policy 203, which outlines the need for recusal in the event of a conflict of interest. I trust he will act appropriately. However, because public comments are heard prior to the board's discussion, I feel it is important to raise the matter now. According to publicly available records, Mr. McNace and Mr. Zach Hill, the listed point of contact on the agreement are both members of New Hope Assembly of God. They also serve as officers of the same nonprofit organization, as confirmed by the latest filings with the Iowa Secretary of State. Additionally, New Hope Assembly of God has actively promoted and raised funds for their nonprofit. While this may not directly impact the facility use agreement itself, transparency is important. I noticed that public representations made by their nonprofit organizations suggest expenditures totaling over $3 million, while IRS Form 990 filings since incorporation report less than $50,000 in total financial activity. These figures may have reasonable explanations, but they also raise questions that may be worth clarification to avoid public misrepresentation. For these reasons, I respectfully urge Mr. McNace to recuse himself from any discussion or vote on the matter. I also encourage the board to thoroughly review the facility use agreement and the associated relationships in light of these financial discrepancies. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am happy to provide further information if requested. Will Rubel.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Hello, Denise Perez. I'm a resident of Grimes. Y'all know who I am. Just saw you some at the governor's days. I'm here to speak about the contract for New Hope. Just because we do have, we're in budget reconsideration, we know money is a real big issue right now. I, in looking at the contract itself, it was kind of vague, and it doesn't really say what we are charging, what our fees are being considered for specific items. With regard to the contract, and I'm just asking a table, the item until there is more information and further clarification with regard to the costs. You know, I looked at the contract, I calculated 52 Sundays at seven and a half hours per Sunday, because it's from 6:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So, some folks might do 53. I just went with a year, 52 weeks in the year. That's 390 billable hours. The contract is for $60,000. That means that it's $154 an hour that they're paying. That may cover the auditorium and a high school classroom. However, the contract does show, they want to use the Mustang Room, the Coral Rooms, the auditorium. So, there really needs to be some clarification on what's actually being paid for. Excuse me. Especially, again, we're in budget reconsideration. We need to be specific. We picked those fees, the school board has agreed to those fees for a specific reason. Is it the cost of the electricity, the water that's being used, the toilet paper that has to be replaced, and the hand towels? Those are the things that I'm concerned, in an effort to do something possibly positive for the community, I don't know. I'm scared that the school district itself is going to be paying for it. So, if it's possible to table and give, and honestly, I hate legalese, I hate reading contracts, I don't know anything about what's in there, but I think it's important when we're doing contracts like this, that we're including a fee schedule in the contract. This is what we're agreeing to. Maybe have a clause that says if it varies from X to Z, you know, we'll account for 10% or 5% or something along those lines. Also, there's 905-1-R, and that does have audience restrictions on the auditorium. It has that supervisors are required for so many people that are in the auditorium. I'm assuming this is for safety. You know, review, making sure that we have enough people here that are covering the interests of the school district. And there's also, again, with that 901-51-R, which seems to be like all the safety things, it appears that there's wording in the contract with New Hope Church that is kind of trying to surpass or curtail or work around. As a citizen, as a taxpayer, who, you know, is also responsible for where the money that the school district goes to, I'm concerned that that puts us in a heavy liability. So, if we can just follow what we have in our, you know, policies and procedures, what's required, and provide a fee schedule that matches the fee schedule that we have on, excuse me, on the website. Because again, that's public information, it's out there. I calculated if you're doing the auditorium and five of the high school classrooms, because some other rooms are more expensive. It's $275 an hour. That's $125 for the auditorium and 30 bucks per classroom. $275 an hour means we should be getting $107,250 for that contract. So, we have to justify that difference. Yep, that's all I had. Sorry. I had to like run everything really last minute, so, thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to item four, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Malmberg.
Second, McNace.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approve, approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We've got June 10th special meeting as well as the May 19th regular meeting. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Vandervelden.
Second, Fiala.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Vandervelden.
Second, Baker-Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item seven is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Malmberg.
Second, McNace.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to item eight, we do not have any written reports or building level reports this evening, so we'll move along to item C, Piper Sandler and Company presentation. Thanks for coming, Tim.
It's a button, green. So, I put in front of you a presentation, and so, I don't want to call them ground rules, but let's walk through what I've done and what I haven't done. And so, what I've done is tried to answer a question, how much money is available? What I've not done is tried to coordinate with the administration or design team about any aspect of the projects, timing, otherwise. Just wanted to focus on helping you understand what kind of resources are available to you, and then the next step in the process is to do all of that coordination. Is that okay for everybody? So, there are three scenarios, and there can be infinitely others. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to come up with some from my experience in working on things like this. And so, the easiest one is the first one, smart option one. And it answers the question, if we voted this fall and we sold all of the bonds next year, how much could we vote? All right? And so, the, let's go over the assumptions. Obviously, one assumption, I don't know where interest rates will be next year, this fall. We chose to use the current market rate, and then we added a quarter of a percent to kind of give a little bit of cushion. The second assumption, critical assumption, is where will property values be in January? Keep in mind, you've already approved the budget for FY '26. There's nothing we can do that will change the budget. So, we're talking about FY '27 at this point. So, that's a new property value we'll get here in January from Dallas and Pope Counties. So, the assumption is that the value would go up and amount equal to the 10-year average. So, 10-year average has actually been around 9.5%. And so, we assume that they would go up. Doing okay? Okay. So, the reading from kind of left to right, there's a row there that says column, and it has a bunch of numbers, one, and then on the far right, it says the number 30, if you see that. That I'll occasionally refer to the column numbers. First, we're solving for tax rate, which is shown in column 30. Your, the max levy rate, $4.05. So, as we talk about bond capacity, we are always mindful of that last column on the right. Your existing bonds are shown under the first column. You've been, as you know, prepaying bonds. Getting those paid off quickly has helped reduce the interest cost, but it's also created this capacity that we're now talking about. And then, the kind of shaded peachish column is the new bond schedule if you were to vote, 66.5 million roughly. The rest of it's the math around solving for the interest cost on the new bond, coming up with total payments, and then coming up with the levy rate on the far right. Doing okay? So, one election, one ballot question. We're going to sell all the bonds in 2026. What can we do? 66.5 million. Maybe you say, you know what, let's round it up, or let's round it down. You've got, you've got some room, wiggle room to do things like that. Now, here's the problem. So, this answers the first question, and when Michelle first asked it, I sent her this, or some derivative of this. The problem, now we wander into IRS rules. These are tax exempt bonds, and so, we, the IRS prescribes a variety of rules that you have to follow. And one of the rules is that you have to have spent the money, spent the money within two years of when you sell the bonds. Cash out the door. Not committed to spend, but cash out the door. It's Iowa, we have winter, you'd vote in November, presumably you'd start doing kind of your design type work. Maybe you wouldn't see construction bidding until summer or fall of 2026, and you know, that's moving right along to get all that money spent in two years. And so, that leads to the second scenario. So, on the second scenario, I tried to put a little bit more thought into, how would we follow the IRS rules? Now, the IRS rules do allow you to sell up to $15 million of bonds in a calendar year, and instead of having a two-year exception, you have a three-year exception. So, that, so, 2026 plus three years, we'd have to have spent the money by '29. That's far more in the reasonable range. So, I added a bond sale. So, there's a 26 bond sale for 15 million, designed specifically to take advantage of that IRS rule. And then, the balance of the bonds in the following year. Now, one more luxury is that we added one more year of property value growth. So, instead of one year of 9.5% value growth, we now have two years, 9.5% property value growth. So, instead of being 66 million and some change of capacity, we're now up to just over 80 million, 82.5 million. Let me pause. Does that make sense to everybody? Am I losing anyone? Okay. And yeah, if you look in column 30, you might say, hey, Tim, there's a few of those numbers that are over 405. You're right, in the third, fourth, fifth decimal place. When we get to actually selling the bonds, obviously, that will become a limiting factor, and we'll move 5,000 around from here to there to solve for that. So, that got me thinking, you know, if we're going to do, what, let me pause there, skip that. Some of your neighbors and peers around the state have been voting kind of more multi-year plans, something that they're going to implement over a five or 10-year window of time. And so, the third scenario then is kind of my attempt to start to show, all right, what would capacity look like if you're doing something where maybe Phase 1 starts in '26 and takes two years, and Phase 2 starts in '27 and takes two years, and Phase 3 starts in '28, whatever. And so, that, that set of facts then introduces an additional year of property value growth. So, now we're up to getting three years of property value growth on option three. Three bond sales, three 20-year payoffs tied to each of the bond sales, and now we're up to almost 100 million. So, I just gave you three different answers to the question, what's our bond capacity? And they range in by 35.5 million dollars, right? So, I totally get it that that's stressful and confusing for folks. I consider this, if you like to play math, this is a circular. What I just told you, probably none of these makes sense to your design team. And your design team is going to sit down, probably, perhaps already has, I don't know, and say, all right, here's how we want to stagger projects, here's what we want to do and stagger them, with your input, of course. And you're going to come back to me and say, here's roughly when we need money. And then, I'll redo these numbers again, and I'll come back to you and say, all right, here's when, here's what you've got for capacity. Can't quite get what your design team wants, but we could do this, and we get close. There's this back and forth that needs to happen, and we've done none of that exercise yet. So, and I realize time is very much of the essence if you're going to vote this fall. So, we've got a fair bit of work to try and, it's doable, don't get me wrong, but there's work to be done between now and when you approve things in August or September. So, can I answer any questions or comments?
Last legislative session, there was some discussion about changing the bonding rules.
Yes.
For public institutions. In the two or the three-year scenario, and say, next legislative cycle, they make the proposed change or something close to it. If we had already voted on and passed, say, the two or the three-year scenario, is that decision made, and can we still raise those bond funds in those years as delineated, or do we have to come back and comply with the new legislation?
Great question, and the answer is perhaps either. It could be, in our discussions with legislators, we tried to help them understand how they would be negatively affecting, affecting projects that already been voter-approved, including some of your neighbors, and trying to help them understand how we're not sure that was the intended approach. We left those discussions with a sense that they all agreed that wasn't what they were trying to do. And so, we have a, we have a belief that were they to do something next legislative session, were you to have voted in November and passed, they would carve up some sort of grandfather-type process to protect you, and there's like 50 of you who are going to be in the same boat. Not all 50 will pass. That being said, legislature is higher in the pecking order, and they get to choose the rules by which you play. And they could certainly say, nope, you can't do that.
Thanks for that. One other question, in the three-year plan, the bonds raised in 2028, would those have to be then spent by the end of 2030?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, I'm just making up numbers with, with dates that have nothing to do with your design. The next task here is to layer design together.
Yep, I appreciate that. What other questions for Tim?
Tim, my question maybe for the group potentially is, if we decide on a two or three-year option, we can still go in November, put one bond language together for a multi-year. We wouldn't have to get three years' worth of approval. We could do all of that in one setting. Is that correct?
Correct, yep. If I can offer one caution about the three-year or anything that looks like that? That caution would be, we've done this a number of times across the state, I've got, had the luxury again to watch how the, those projects work, and actually, I'm going to end up with two cautions. One caution, quite often, my experience is, the public forgets that you told them it will take five or six or eight years to implement the project. Once the election has happened, they will be here asking you, when is my going to be completed? And you're going to be pressured and scrambling to try and answer that question in the most favorable light. And sometimes, that gets to be difficult just because our lack of memory. I'm not criticizing any of you, I don't mean it that way. But I've just seen this where people forget, you know, we said we'll build the auditorium last, and the auditorium folks are here saying, when am I getting my auditorium? And I know you've got an auditorium, so that's why I'm picking on that one. So, the other caution that I would have is a, is more of a cash, Ryan, back to the question you started with. If the legislature were to change the rules after you vote, I'd sure like to have you not have let a construction contract to spend money you now don't have to spend. Does that make sense?
Yep.
We're going to have to think some and incorporate your legal team into thinking through, how do we design, let, bond contracts that we know when we let the contract, we have the cash to pay for it? We're fortunate to not have had that problem in any of the prior elections, but this legislative session, I was a little nervous that that might come up, and we might have, you know, contracts that we couldn't perform on, which is a bad look for, for all of us in the world. Obviously, it'd be a stress for, for you all.
The last bond, didn't we sell it over a three-year period, or was it two?
I think it was two.
Two sales. Okay. We've never done a three?
Well, I take that back, it was 1.85 million.
Oh, there was a little tail, yeah.
So, we did do three? Okay.
I don't think we did three when we did the high school.
Any other questions? Appreciate you, Tim. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
It's always a way to appreciate it.
We look forward to helping you out.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
Stay from Michelle's presentation. All right. Next, we've got Michelle and Sean to talk to us about equipment breakdown insurance, a strategic investment for DCG. Sean, do you want to come up, or?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to recognize and thank Sean for wearing a nice DCG shirt tonight.
I got them, Beth, I got them.
So, I have been talking this year about the possibility of equipment breakdown. I'd just like to walk through what that would look like and what our proposal from R E M I appears to be. A vendor can come into the district and repair equipment, or do preventive maintenance work to protect against future breakdowns in the HVAC area, and be fully reimbursed through this insurance program. Also in this program, our staff can act as a service vendor, in which case, the school is reimbursed for the actual salary and benefits, labor costs, at a specified quoted amount per hour, and for us, that is $70 per hour for our staff. And then, if something is unable to be repaired under the cost of this insurance, it would be more expensive to repair, then there's a buyout provision included with it, and in that buyout provision, age, actual cash value is applied to that piece of equipment. It allows us, most importantly at this point in time, for us to shift costs from either the general fund or the Pebble Fund into the management fund, which pays for the premium for this insurance policy. And it reimburses the school for the cost of repairing things that we're doing anyway internally right now, and things that we are and possibly are not having time to do right now for preventive maintenance. So, it includes all parts, all the mailing costs, it even includes $15 to transport a part across the district if the claims are filed for all of those things. P O. numbers are assigned from R E M I, and they have an online program that we would utilize. They can contact the vendors directly and bill directly to R E M I, taking us entirely out of the process, saving us time in accounting as well. I think that one of the most beneficial things for this R E M I equipment breakdown product is that they have what they call a transparency portal, where you can log in in real time and see where a claim is at any point in time, exactly what costs are, all the data associated with it drilled down to look at invoices, et cetera. And so, it, it does provide the most information for our staff. There are two components with this policy. One is called the wall-to-wall equipment, and that is similar to what the district had many, many years ago in equipment breakdown, so that's the copier breakdown. That's the time clock on the wall, or the badge reader on the wall outside, any of those items that break down, the boiler in the kitchen, et cetera. We call, we get a claim number, they contact a vendor, we contact a vendor, and it happens through R E M I that that repair is paid. In addition to that, for the first time, we have quoted the HVAC environmental control option, which is the bigger piece of this, but probably where we will get the most bang for our buck in this. And specifically, we've been working very closely with Baker Controls, who came in and did an ass- who came in and did an assessment of our entire district to take a look at where we are, where our needs are, and priced us accordingly with that. This slide is just a view of how a standard claims process works. Um, the claim documentation, that work order, the field service report, any in-house reimbursement request, if we're having our own people do the work, is sent in to claims@remi.com. It's then uploaded into that portal. Um, it, it is then reviewed by R E M I staff and they determine the payment and process that claim. It's automatically pulled into R E M I online from either that email or an online call. Um, so it's visible to us in real time, so we can track how many claims we have out there, how many vendors are paid or unpaid, et cetera. Uh, this is how it looks when it's in-house reimbursement. Uh, obviously, uh, we call and make a claim. Our in-house people are doing those repairs. And so I want you to think about repairs that we're doing every day. Maybe it's Sean or his staff on a roof doing an HVAC repair. Maybe it's technology for a staff computer or a student computer. Um, those are things that are already happening. And this process allows us to save money in the general fund by getting reimbursement for those costs that we're already, um, spending. We do have to turn those in timely, and we've worked on some internal processes here and what that will look like for those claims. Um, this is what it looks like for potential buyouts. Some of our equipment may be older and the cost of repairing it is going to be more than what it's actually worth. Then, uh, you submit, uh, that work order within ninety days through the same R E M I claims portal. And that assessment is done and determined, uh, the actual cash value, um, to determine what, if we get a payout. Now, remember, right now, if a piece of equipment is too expensive to repair, there's, there's no payout. We just buy another one and fix it that way, so. Uh, I know this is unreadable. This is possibly more readable on your laptop, but this is what the portal looks like and all the information that'll be available to Sean and his staff as we process claims, look at claims. Uh, a technology department as well can drill down to just their area and see how many claims they have out, how many of those internal claim processing. Uh, for the technology department, they have determined that they are all going to file, uh, claims. So that entire staff of four will have the ability to log in. I think in the operations department, we're gonna drill that down to three individuals that'll have access in there and be able to do that. So we're working on what those internal processes look like here. The other great thing about the Remi, R E M I online transparency portal is that we finally get some data, um, that will help us with our asset, um.
Essentials.
Asset essentials program. Dang, I was so close. Our sa- asset essentials program, where we have some data there. This will provide an extra layer of data for what we're repairing internally or what we went to vendors for. Those two are gonna tie together because in asset essentials, we're actually going to have dropdown codes that are specific to the insurance claims that we make. Anything else I wanna say there, Sean? This is the big slide, insurance is about risk. And so when we determine risk, uh, they're gonna set a premium accordingly, uh, for, hopefully to break as close to even for us or to make a little bit of money on the insurance company side. For the wall-to-wall piece, you'll notice there it's just over four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for all of that equipment for, uh, wall-to-wall, uh, reimbursement. Uh, and then moving into HVAC and preventative maintenance, which is a, uh, another big portion of this, uh, we're looking at one point three, one point seven, I can't see it from here. It's one point seven, thank you, uh, for that portion. Do you wanna talk kind of about all the different things that are covered in that, Sean?
I can. Um, so what's covered under R E M I is not just HVAC equipment. HVAC equipment, um, is actually a separate deal, preventative maintenance only on HVAC equipment. We asked the question because, sorry, we were wondering about, it covers our lawn mowers. It covers our gators. It covers, if they break down, we take them to Vanwall, they pay. We just do it the same way. It covers kitchen equipment, anything that's wall-to-wall in the building that is not part of the structure, we can actually claim on this insurance. Um, the HVAC side, we have, we've got a lot of equipment in the district. Uh, we have twenty-three water heaters, eleven boilers, three hundred and forty-seven heat pumps, rooftop units twenty-one, ERVs twenty-eight. The, the list goes on and on to eight hundred and six pieces of HVAC equipment that is all in here. Everything is in here and it shows the visits per year preventative maintenance. Um, Baker Group is the authorized contractor for that. So what will be nice is if we do have a mechanical breakdown during the day, we already have one of their guys onsite. He can quit doing that preventative and go be reactive. Anything else?
Um, this is the fine print for coverage highlights. Um, you can see the seventy dollars per hour for in-house and that flat rate for transportation with a cap of five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine in there. Anytime I'm gonna have a loss larger than, uh, expected to be larger than seventy-five hundred, we do have a notification process where we have to tell them, um. The, it's a three-year proposal, so the interesting part about this is it's structured so that if we don't make eighty percent of the premium back in repairs for the specific year, I thought I put this in, maybe it's back here. There it is. Uh, the loss ratio, less than eighty percent, there's no pri- no premium increase for the next year. So they have given us a guarantee. If it is eighty to a hundred percent, we'll have a price increase between five and fifteen percent of what the premium would be. And anything greater than that would be an increase of greater to fifteen percent. So you can kinda see where their margin is for what we're looking at. Um, excluded coverage, uh, is listed there. They're not gonna cover any software, any licensing things, et cetera there. Um, some restrictions there on some of the HVAC controls. Um, I have forty-three hundred computers in the district. That's, that's a lot of computers to be covered in this as well. Uh, corrected maintenance repairs expenses are capped at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, most of those are already identified. Sean has been spending a great deal of time going through all of the mezzanine areas of the district with the Baker people, uh, for weeks on end here in order to get us a good quote for this. And that must be my last slide 'cause I can't get it to go. Um, it is our recommendation to move forward with this. We did take one position that was in Sean's area and determine if this goes into effect, we're not going to fill that general fund position. It was an HVAC position. Um, so we do, we have already realized some general fund savings before even stepping in. If we don't move forward with this, of course, that will be, that will still be a need that we have to fill in the district. Um, that was a position that was, um, currently a ground, no, what was Randy? A le- an electrician position. And it has not been filled since, uh, that employee, uh, left us. What questions do you have about R E M I and about spending out of management fund? As you know, we did levy, uh, in advance for this.
So I assume that there's an accounts receivable then from R E M I as we incur either self-performed activities or there's reimbursement for third-party service? As that revenue comes back into the district, where does it go? Does it go to general fund or does it go back into management?
So, uh, any of the reimbursement for actual expenditures would go back into the general fund. So those salary and benefits would go back into the general fund. Or if I, uh, if the claims process gets mixed up and we pay a vendor instead of R E M I paying the vendor directly, that's how that works.
Okay, so, so R E M I is, the, the vast majority of these, R E M I's paying the vendor directly?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So there isn't, generally speaking, an inflow of cash. We make a premium payment, we submit, well, I suppose there would be an inflow of cash relative to the self-perform piece of it.
Correct.
The outsourced piece of it would go directly to Baker Group.
If the claims are running smoothly, R E M I does all of it and just reimburses me for any in-house claims that I make or, uh, any actual cash value they give me for a broken down piece of equipment wherein therefore I would replace out of a different expenditure code.
So then the sa- then that was, the, the self-perform piece runs as an offset to the salary and benefits of that stuff?
And Sean and Travis and I have talked, um, about tracking this very specifically, not only through the R E M I portal, but through specific accounting codes and through specific codes that we're going to set up in their asset essentials program, uh, so that we can pull reports and track things that way.
Great.
I'm trying to process and you'll have to forgive me. Um, in the past, when we've had equipment that's met its usage or, um, life expectancy, we've gone on gov deals and we've sold those products. But this in essence would say that then if those products are no longer of value, instead they would reimburse us for the cost of those things? How does, can you talk a little bit about that? I'm just not.
So, uh, let, let's pretend it's a copier and that copier is fifteen years old and the parts to replace it are more.
Than the value of the copier.
Than the value of the copier itself. They would give us an actual cash value settlement, um, whatever that might be on a fifteen-year-old copier. Let's say it's a hundred dollars. Then R E M I would have the option of taking it if they so wish. Of course, they're never going to come and get that copier. And so we would follow the same process to dispose of.
Okay.
District items as we would follow that po- disposal policy.
I'm not saying on the copiers, is there like, or, like those printers, we just bought those printers last, approved the approval, the purchase of those printers last board meeting? Do, do we buy a service contract for those printers as well? So it's like, is there overlapping coverage on these?
So we've been very cognizant in, uh, entering into any service contracts for this year, knowing that this was on the horizon. So for example, as we bid copiers this year, we bought the equipment outright without service contracts included.
And then, one other question I had, and I'm probably not reading this right, but it was, it's basically one point four million more to get the HVAC coverage? But they only cover up to four hundred and fifty thousand annually, so it's like.
Because five hundred of that is preventative maintenance, which breaks down in all these pieces of equipment and a schedule.
Okay, and that's different than the Baker, 'cause we have the service contract through Baker Group, right? That, which is pre- preventative maintenance already, right?
Correct, and that one would stop right away. I've already talked to Baker Group.
That would stop, okay.
We would just pay for their one visit they did this spring.
And you mentioned that earlier.
And that would be null and void, and then they'd take over with R E M I.
So we pay one point four million, they cover four fifty of it, but five hundred is preventive maintenance. So there's another four hundred thousand in there that just goes to them, am I missing that? Am I not reading that right?
It goes to the wall-to-wall.
Wall-to-wall.
So that's all your computers, that's your.
No, that's, no, that's, the four hundred is the wall-to-wall. One point eight million minus four hundred thousand is one point four million.
I could be wrong there.
I don't think.
One point seven total.
One point seven total, okay, so four hundred.
So four hundred's already in there for your worker. So. In the event that we would ever get to a hundred percent premium, insurance companies don't work that way.
Yeah.
They're always going, that's why they're the tallest buildings in every city.
Yeah, I just don't wanna make them any taller than they have to be, that's all I'm looking at.
So we are purchasing an insurance, making a risk bet, obviously. And they're gonna structure that as best they can to their advantage. Our benefit, of course, is that we've got some cost shift and that we've also got, uh, some recoup, accou- into the general fund. And that's why districts look at this option.
What's the estimate, what's that might be? Is there any like projection on what we might recoup? Did you say that already? Maybe you already did, I kinda lost it.
I missed that question, I'm sorry.
Do we know what, we have any projection on what that, what we might recoup based on past years?
I think, I think Sean has been working hard with a laundry list.
We can recoup. They, they, like they said, they also cover heat pump changeouts. So if it is beyond life expectancy, they will pay for the material and labor to put a heat pump in. We have, we have some of those sitting at the shop right now that. That are at end of life, that we could recoup that money at the end.
What is one of those to replace?
A heat pump?
Yeah.
Uh, depending on the tonnage or anything, configuration, I would say average for a contractor to do one of them is twenty-three thousand.
Other questions for Sean and Sean?
So is the only downside, if we look at like the claims that we make, if we had a crazy year, we're making a bunch and we have the fee schedule go up, I mean, that's really the only negative. We think moving around the dollars, the preventative maintenance piece, we're gonna net positive with a plus. The only thing would be if we had some sort of crazy year where we can't, obviously you can't predict what's gonna happen. That would be the only kind of intangible that we can't predict, that would be a negative, why you wouldn't do this. But the positives, it sounds like o- overweight that, if I'm accurate.
And I, I think your team here in district has identified, uh, where there are caps, we will be hitting cap. Where, you know, we have a listing of plans in order to get this done and get it done effectively. From past experience, I can tell you the only thing that makes these type of, uh, programs fail is if you don't have a well-oiled machine for the claims process in district. And we've worked very hard to kinda analyze that. And operations is setting plans in place as of this week to meet with R E M I and get up and moving.
Awesome.
Is there any sort of overlap with our current, um, like, facilities, liability, um, insurance and R E M I when it comes to weather? Meaning that we have rooftop units, we have, um, I mean, I guess that, that would be the primary thing that I'm thinking here.
So with regard to property casualty, for example, if the storm tonight tears a, a ERV off the top of the roof or. The temperature, I, I used a big, I used a big word there, okay? If something comes off the roof, I'm going to make a claim on property casualty insurance and not mess with R E M I at all. Because that's what the coverage is and we'll pay the deductible for that and, and move forward there.
Okay.
So they, they really don't cross.
They don't overlap. We just have a lot of crazy weather lately and it seems to be getting more crazy?
Uh, yeah, two derechos in my lifetime when I didn't know the word derecho before.
Yeah. Couple polar vortexes, et cetera.
What other questions?
Um, I'm just curious, other neighboring school districts that participate in this program, do, can you?
Yes, um, we reviewed testimonials from several different school districts. And I'm sorry, I don't have that list.
That's okay.
In front of me right now.
West Central Valley, Sadele.
Thank you.
And there's another one in the metro.
West Des Moines.
Yeah.
Okay, Des Moines, they're all on the R E M I program. As we looked, there, there are two products that there, we looked at the two products. The appeal of this one very specifically is the transparency portal and the partnership with Baker in the preventative maintenance piece. Um, that's why we think this one is a better product and a better fit for our district.
Thank you.
How much was that Baker contract that will go away? I can't remember what, what we approved.
I wanna say it was around sixty-three thousand.
Annually, annually, okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean.
Dr. Corinza?
All right, uh, good evening. We've got just three things, uh, two of them will go pretty quickly and one I'm gonna take a little bit longer to explain. Uh, the first up is state reporting. Just wanna bring you up to speed with where we're at with those end-of-year state reports. Um, we've, as you can see, we've met all of our deadlines, um, C T E. We've, uh, gone and looked at our student rosters and finished up, uh, just some details within C T E. Our spring beds is the only one that really isn't fully submitted yet because the state's experiencing an issue with their website. But that, um, information is all in there. Our K six, um, uh, should be, sorry, K eight default assessment report, that's the other one I'm working. Um, we won't be able to submit it completely, even though I said it really is done. But with the changeover in principles. said it really is done. But with the changeover in principals, we are stuck with one school not being able, the principal can't get in yet, and the other principal's logged out. So, no problem, they'll reopen that in August. Spring S R I is complete as well, and I feel like we've got assessment accountability that just goes in to make sure that we're being accountable for scores of students that are D C G students. And we did have some corrections to make within the civil rights data collection. When they audited our data, there was just some discrepancies, not on anybody's fault, but we went in and cleaned up that data. So, and some of them weren't an error to begin with. So, questions about state reporting? It's riveting stuff. Okay, school improvement process updates. This is the one I want to talk to you about a little bit more in depth. You have two attachments in your board report there. The first is our district and building school improvement plans. It's really just the district tonight, kind of our timeline. If you remember last month, we presented to you on whether or not we met or how we did with regards to our building and district short range, or annual goals and long-range goals. This month, we want to present to you our new goals for next year that were decided upon with input from our administrative team. And then, also I want to share with you kind of the framework or the skeleton for our professional development. So, what you'll see on the page, well, page one of the building or district goals, you'll just kind of see our philosophy, this whole idea of setting goals, planning our work, the act of actually implementing our strategies, assessing and, and again, as we get towards later in the year, and actually throughout the year, reflecting and adjusting practices. So, we have some good things in place. This was our second year of running our school improvement plan, our planning process, and it went very, very smoothly. So, at the bottom of page two there, you'll see our four district annual goals. Some of them have not changed and some of them have. So, if you look at our first goal is our academic goal, we did not have any changes to that. As you saw at our last meeting in March, or May, we had made some pretty good progress in, in several of our grades. We still acknowledge that we have work to do, but we believe in line with that five-year academic goal of 100% of students being proficient, that we still have some work to go. We did talk last time too. Ryan asked a great question about growth, and I can see that goal shifting in years to come as we look at how do we ensure that students are actually growing, not just at proficiency. The second goal is, and we have some new steps. So, this is our academic support goal around M T S S behavior and academics. So, 100% of our D C G buildings will show growth and implementation in what we call 10 capacities of tier one and tier two. So, we have a framework that describes best practices. We call it a capacity matrix. Just basically says, hey, at tier one, or in terms of philosophy, tier one and tier two, here are best practices that we hope schools will work to achieve. And then, how do you show evidence? Do you rank yourself? Where are you at? Hey, we're at beginning, which would be absolutely just fine if somebody was in a beginning stage. Or it may be a building that says, hey, we're at wisdom. We could teach somebody else how to do this. We're having such good success. We want them to show growth in at least the 10 capacities of tier one and two. Each one of those capacities is a little bit different, but that's a good measurable way for us to also link some evidence, so we can be able to talk with those building principals about the work they're doing. Goal three is our climate and culture goal. I want to speak to this one for just a little bit. The conditions for learning survey, we shared some of the results from that at our last meeting, but we also shared some, I would call her some strengths and some areas of, of growth maybe with using that tool. As an administrative team, we agreed that we would continue with that one more year, the conditions for learning survey. So, that would be basically asking our buildings to show improvement in five percentage points improvement in scoring for one or more of those topic areas on the conditions for learning survey. What will happen this coming school year, along with this goal, is we are going to look as an administrative team at a new climate and culture survey, one that we think, well, I should say, we believe that there's others out there that may yield us some better information than what we currently get from the conditions for learning. The C F L is not a bad tool. We just think we can find others that give us more actionable data in regards to how our, how our buildings are operating from a climate and culture standpoint. And then, lastly, our teacher efficacy goal. So, by 2026, our district will have engaged in learning around the integration of P L Cs and the strong framework. So, last year, our goal was to just introduce the seven habit, or the seven parts of the strong framework, and now we're looking at that integration between P L Cs and strong. And so, giving our teachers time to actually meet in teams and understand how effective teaching can be shaped at their professional learning communities. So, for that one, it is a new step. Questions about the goals that you see for, for the year?
For that last one you just talked about, how do we, like, how do we, you know, it just says engaged in learning. There's no real, like, definition of if we achieve that or not. So, just curious on how that's going to be looked at.
Yeah, that definition, we used that also, I believe, last year with our goal, and we took that as engaged in professional development. So, I mean, we aren't measuring how much do I love this, because that's probably a little bit difficult for us to measure. We wouldn't, we probably don't have the tools to do that, as much as we've engaged our coaches. So, we will create the presentation here at the district level. We will give it to our instructional coaches and principals who will then be able to give input and feedback. So, they're helping to shape that process. The principal and the coach will deliver that. For us, I think the engage part means staying on the cadence. So, we aren't going to lose touch with it. And I think it was a helpful goal for us last year, is that we had seven and it can be really easy to kind of fall off and trail off. So, I, I would say that we would intend the engagement to be that they're completed and teachers are actively able to use that topic. So, what they're learning, the first hour is generally like the teaching part, the P D part. The second hour is application.
And so, we'll keep track of that somehow, of which teachers will, their staff have...
Yep, as, yeah, so we'll have, the evidence of this is our professional development agendas in minutes.
Okay.
Some buildings do take attendance at P D, some do not. I think that varies. We haven't established any sort of expectation for that. But we have said, and we've had conversations before, where if people, if there was a staff member who was taking absences or leaves on those P Ds, that would be a conversation we would have with that staff member.
And do we give any surveys or something to the teachers about how they implement these P Ds in their classrooms, or, you know, we saw some really great presentations here from different building leaders about the feedback loop that they have with their staff on the professional development and how they're using those research-based strategies in, in the classroom. And I think that that sort of building reporting goes a long way with our community. You know, it's a snapshot into what those Wednesday afternoons look like and why we're all making this big sacrifice of rearranging, you know, our busy lives. I would love to have some sort of more formalized piece on that, or reporting back piece as we're diving into so much of this impressive work. You know, how, how, how is it meaningful to, to the teachers in the classroom? What are the successes that they're seeing with their students? Because that's why we're doing all this, right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think two answers I would give you is number one, I would absolutely love the opportunity. I nerd out at this kind of stuff, so I think it's important that we give teachers an opportunity. And we've done some things like, Mrs. Olson did some teaching showcases, videos of teachers modeling good instruction with our My View series or with YouFly. I think some of those could serve as evidence. And I love that word evidence, because what do we put forth that shows that the work that we're doing is important? I would want to bring that back to the team, because probably a lot of that is collected locally, but we need to get to them before the year starts, so that they understand what they could be looking for, maybe using part of their building time to report on that, as well as district time. We should be giving you updates. And I, it just got me thinking of how I might craft some of our, rather than just reporting, well, I would still continue to report what we do every Wednesday, because that's accountability and that's important, but also maybe taking some time to highlight things that worked from our learning, absolutely.
I just think when our buildings have that opportunity to kind of cross-pollinate and share those practices, we see how meaningful they are to the collaborative process.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, and we could also do a survey, and we did a survey this year of how, you know, how people felt the Wednesday went. I think we worry, I worry at times about survey fatigue, because there's so many surveys versus the evidence piece. Maybe inframed in that light, we would get some good things to be able to share out.
Nothing like a lesson from a vetted teacher.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I agree. Okay, any other questions? All right. I want to bring your attention to the second document, which is our professional learning goals and calendar. So, this just gives you an overview of professional development and how we've set that up here as a district, our foundation. This has not changed. We use this going into this past year. We, the roots of our professional development sit with the I professional development model. As you can see there in the diagram, that's the idea of, hey, we're going to find out where we need our support, what our data looks like, we're going to identify that content, we're going to learn about the content, we're going to implement it in classrooms and keep checking, and then going back to some sort of evaluation, did it work? And I think that's what Nancy's getting to there. We did, you can see our professional development calendar structure is defined there. So, these are the times. So, basically, every Wednesday falls into one of those five categories, with the exception of parent-teacher conferences at the elementary and, and middle level. That's, that's in there. That's in the schedule, but not in its own box. So, this is the skeleton. So, you can kind of see, this has been so helpful for our teams. We've had this developed probably since March, at least the skeleton, starting it. I want to thank Mr. Justman for his work to get the classified staff. P D, not only he met with our, kind of a team of classified staff to actually plan what would meaningful P D look like. You will see in some of those classified staff topics, you'll see an R or an O before it. R is required, so they will have to be there for those. O is optional, so they have an opportunity to participate if that content is meaningful for them. Still honors what we said we wanted to do with that group of staff and making sure they're paid as well. And then, you can see, building, P D is obviously designed by the building district. That will be, Shaylee, to your question, that will be that engagement piece, that P L Cs work with strong framework. And then, our flex days are kind of for those groups that we don't always traditionally get to see, but were probably one of the highlights from last year. So, questions about the P D schedule? One last thing I would leave with. So, next month, I will bring to you then all of this into one nice package. So, you can see, we kind of build it as we go with the transition of new principals at both the high school and the middle school. We're still waiting for some of their teams and some of their goal work, so we've got plenty of time, but our other teams are off and running. One suggestion I'll offer up to all of you, and, and Dr. Bloom and I have mentioned this, is if you are interested or would be interested in having a work session around our results from our Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, I S A S, it might be something for us to gather together maybe early in the fall and be able to look at our results and, and engage you with some of our building leaders in both strengths and areas for improvement yet, as, based on those results. I think, oh, sorry, there's one more. Decap, I was talking so long, I forgot I had a third item. Decap, I'm really proud of this team. If you'll look there, our decap team presented, if you remember, the team is right there. I wrote, put those in the notes. And at that time, we weren't quite sure of our formal score, but we did receive 27 out of 36 points, which was great, because our previous year, we scored 16. Now, that's, of course, over many areas of a rubric. It's probably one-point improvement in about seven areas, but I will tell you, that group worked harder than ever. And you're going to start to see those results in terms of students' understanding of, of career readiness skills, understanding their four-year plans at the high school. We have, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I think we have even bigger plans for communicating more generalized communication out to the public, utilizing A J to help us, and also with our new career and technical education program coordinator, he'll be coming on board of the team. So, I'm, I'm excited for the work that is ahead, but we, we were ahead of the state average. So, working towards being a good role model for other districts that may be similar to D C G.
I can personally speak to this, and that my eighth grader came home telling me all about colleges and jobs that she wants to do and where she can do, become a chiropractor and her four-year plan. So, yes, they did a fabulous job at Oakview with this this year.
That's cool. That's what we want for the kids, and it takes such a team. I mean, you know, we may have a leadership team, but that also acknowledges the classroom teachers that are a part. That will probably be the other area where we can gain the most, is right now we have a pretty limited team, when we probably should expand the team into more classroom teachers and representation. So, all, it's a journey, not a race, but I'm glad to hear that. That's what we want to hear.
And is there any sort of lens or vision towards working with how this might look for our senior-plus students, Iowa vocational rehab services and their kind of pathways for after-school?
I love that comment. That is all included in the rubrics. And so, while we're not perfect in all of those areas, those are considerations that we know we aren't there yet, but need to be able to do that. So, that will be coming. I would also say, if you, and not to divulge from that, because we, that is coming, for us, we need to get the team arranged. We need to find the special educators. Our special education I D E A differentiated accountability team that worked with transition planning, they will be a key part of that work. And what's happened is all these groups are kind of in isolation. We're not really tying them all together, which is kind of our next steps. Lastly, also with the state, you know, they have moved down career education down to fifth and sixth grade as well. And we did purchase Zello, which is our career navigator software for, we now have a K-12 starting this next year. So, you'll start to see more instruction happening at the elementaries. Super exciting.
Any questions for Dr. Karinza?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bloom?
Three brief updates from me. First, we had six building permits this month, six in Grimes, zero at this time in Dallas Center. So, there's our totals for kind of our fiscal year of 119 at this time. Let's take a peek at the estimated enrollment. So, I wanted to share those numbers with you. So, we're kind of still doing off the math of October 1. Last year, 3576 was our certified number that we kind of keep doing the math against. And as of today, students we know are leaving us, again, graduation to moving to a new school, name your situation, and those that have already registered. So, we have, you know, have a firm registration in hand, that's 3503. So, that, of course, is starting with a bad sign, and that's a negative. That would be down 73 students right now. So, again, if that comes to fruition, that would be three straight years of negative growth. So, just want to keep that. We'll keep doing our thing to keep promoting from the registration side of things. I know as we get strategic plan and facility stuff kind of underway, A J and I have already had lots of conversations, kind of a blowout, about what publicity next steps can be there when we talk about public education and D C G in particular. So, that's, you know, certainly going to be in the works to the best of our abilities, but from just a straight registration process, we are down 73, and that is as of Friday. And then, lastly, just want to give a quick staffing update. So, we had Adam Jewell was named the activities assistant to Madison. Madison hired Adam. Adam's a current high school math teacher. So, that has a high school math position. Our new high school principal has an interview scheduled next week for that position, so fingers crossed for, for good candidates there. Sixth grade position is open with a resignation from a staff member. So, our new middle school, Mr. Snow, will have some applicants there. So, he will do interviews, and they're kind of working behind the scenes now with Mr. Justman. And then, Mr. Blackmore's working with Mr. Donahue as well. Don's kind of playing double duty there to help out. And then, we actually have a high school special ed position open and middle school special ed. And that's probably of the four, the four open positions. Those are the two I would be the most concerned about. Those special ed positions are tough anyway, let alone summertime. I will share with you that they certainly have viable Plan B options and C options in the works if there is not a person that is hired that I don't think will in any way do disservice to kids or staff. But we're going to keep promoting that. A J keeps pumping that, those two positions in particular, out as much as he can. So, again, we'll, we'll have plans if necessary, but those are the four open positions that our principals and Mr. Justman are working together on. So, with that, those are my quick three. Any questions there? All right, thanks.
Ms. Warrath?
Looking at the revenue expenditure summary, we've almost made it to the end of the fiscal year. This is just before the June payroll runs, or at 95.8% of our fiscal year, we are at 88.5% of expenditures as appropriated and 96.19% of revenue. Remember, things like special education tuition, some of that open enrollment tuition, none of those revenues come into... come until the very last moment or even into July and are accrued back in. So I fully see us at a hundred percent, hundred percent of appropriated revenue for the year. Looking at our public budget comparison as of the same date, June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, this leaves three payrolls to run with certified teachers in this view, our instruction at eighty-two percent there, support services at seventy-six, non-instruction, uh, at fifty-one, and our debt service area at thirty-seven percent. So all of that looking good.
Any questions for Ms. Wermuth? All right, I'll move along to old business. We've got the second reading of, uh, seven, uh, let's see, five, seven, eight-hundred series policies. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve Dickinson.
Second, Baker Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to new business, the first reading of, um, uh, some, let's see, one, two, four, five, six, seven-hundred, uh, series policies, and then one to rescind. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve McNace.
Second, Monberg.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have, um, so on the, uh, it's five oh five dot oh five, when it talks about all the graduation, I think qualifications or requirements, um, there's a bunch of stuff in there that just looks, like it talks about if you're after twenty-twenty-two and then you're after twenty-twenty-three, and like, I don't know if we plan on cleaning that up a little bit. And so just something to, to look at. I just don't know why we have all that in there, 'cause it's now, we're past. Um, and then also the honors diploma, I thought we were getting rid of that, but I didn't know when that was happening. So that is all in there as well. So just something, and maybe that's next year, or that could be in, maybe, I don't know what year we were getting rid of that. But the honors diploma is also going away. Right, so just, maybe that's something just we put in here that it's gone, like, we maybe need to just list that it's in here, that we're going away, so.
We talked about the cleanup.
Okay.
It just reads, it's, um, looking at other policies from around the area, plus IASVs. Those I think were notes. I wasn't clear on if they were meant to stay in there, done previous to us being here. So, um, I mean, if there's, if there's agreement that it's clunky and it doesn't read well, we can easily clean that up in another review. That wouldn't change the content of the policy, just.
As the one who super loves tidy policy, um, there might be something to leaving it in the event, since we're changing what the requirements were. But if we have graduates that are now, I mean, twenty-two and twenty-three is probably a little bit outside of that. But if we have graduates whose high school, um, credits are being questioned for something, for application into a program somewhere, but they need to make sure that, that they did actually fulfill the requirements for graduation per an old policy versus what is the new policy. There might be something to leaving that in there for like a five-year or three-year or something to that.
Yeah, I love your guidance. Uh, if we did take, I'm sorry, Monica.
No, I'm just saying that would make sense, because that's what I was thinking too, that we kept it in there for historical. So if someone, yeah, it's being questioned at a university.
It's gonna go really long if we keep.
Well, I mean, not forever, just, you know.
And the primer just came out, so we wouldn't, I don't think we wanted to make a move to clean that up without some more, in order to get it to this board meeting. So, yeah, I, I agree, there is an ability and simbly to go back and look at past copies.
Mm-hmm, historical.
The public couldn't do it, but the, behind the scenes, we could pull up a past if we cleaned it up. I'm not opposed to leaving it, it's just something I think that creates, could, it just doesn't read well.
It was, it was very, I would read it, oh wait, that doesn't matter right now, oh wait, and so it just got a little confusing, but it's fine.
Great points. I think to the honors diploma piece, I think it can probably come out of policy, but stay in our handbook because we are gonna grandfather in those students that are currently working towards the honors diploma. It would be kind of that, I, I, I forget if it's that, this current freshman year class coming in. That's the group that's like, nope, it doesn't exist anymore, but certainly for those upperclassmen that have been working with this in mind, I know we wanna take care of them. So maybe that, the policy piece, it comes out, but it stays with the asterix or explanation inside the high school handbook.
For doing that, I have another one. Um, so four oh two dot oh three for abusive students. We take out the whole level one investigator. Are we just getting, like, is that just not happening now? Is that happening by a different agency? Sorry.
This, you're, you're gonna like, you're not, Greg's gonna explain, uh, the new challenge.
So, um, yeah, this is the model policy from IASV. Um, it does the law, and I, I can't remember what bill number right off the top of my head, that removed the layer. It was in her omnibus bill, I think it was one of the last ones that she signed. It takes away any level one and level two investigations. Anytime a claim about abuse of a student is made by whether an employee or a parent or so, um, that then, that complaint is then turned over to the Department of Health and Human Services for investigation.
And that's kind of what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that I was reading.
So all the level one language would be, uh, struck then from handbooks and all of that. Um, that they would then, HHS would then communicate with the school district as to the status of the complaint.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all hidden policies.
Yeah, very good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item B, uh, set substitute teacher pay for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and substitute incentive. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item C, substitute classified staff and non-teacher rates for twenty-five, twenty-six. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve Baker Curtis.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item D, school fees and nutrition prices for twenty-five, twenty-six school years. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve McNace.
Second, Monberg.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item E, the twenty-five, twenty-six phone and data stipends. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve Vander Golden.
Second, McNace.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item F, the facilities use agreement. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve Monberg.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion?
Yes. Okay, so I actually had the same questions that Denise raised on the cost. Um, it actually is fifty-three Sundays, did the math. Um, it is, she said seven and a half hours, I believe it's six and a half hours. Um, and so if you look at, they are A grade, what are the three, whatever that is, the group three? So that actually comes up to, um, seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five if you're doing one classroom, one vocal room, and one auditorium. I would say the facility agreement is a little confusing, like she said, um, are they doing two vocal rooms? One, I said choir rooms, I think, is that one room, two rooms, is it just the Mustang room? So I do, would like to see just some more clarity around that, 'cause this costing does not match what, as a board, we approved for facility fees. So a breakdown would be very helpful, um, 'cause it does not line up with our current facilities costing. Um, 'cause I show thirty dollars for one classroom, seventy-five dollars for a vocal room, and a hundred and twenty-five for an auditorium, which would be two hundred and thirty dollars, six and a half hours, fifty-three weeks. So that's where I get the seventy-nine, two thirty-five. So just something that, I mean, I don't think it looks great if we're giving a discount per se, um, when we clearly have and have approved a facilities con- or, you know, fees, so.
So let me, yeah, great questions, great point. I'll tell you how rough number of sixty thousand came to be. And if we wanna, you know, we gotta go back and tighten anything or bring more stuff, you got it. So, you know, working with, working with Zach over the last handful of months, you know, I'm, I'm somewhat under the impression that all of those areas, so auditorium, two vocal music rooms, and the Mustang room, will not all be used for six and a half hours every single Sunday. Okay, like church services at this time, youth stuff is at this time. So what I did was I took six point five hours and multiply it by the highest number, which was the auditorium rate. Assuming you sat in the auditorium the whole time for six and a half hours, that was the hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour at group three. That is eight hundred and twelve dollars a day using the fifty-two weeks or so. That was roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars. As part of the agreement, DCG is not probably staffed to the point where we can have a custodian in there the whole time. Jake, that runs our auditorium the whole time there. So they're, they're being charged fifty dollars per hour on top of the sixty thousand for training from Travis and Sean, as well as Jake, on using the, the little equipment they need but to run, you know, some lights and sound, and then they will have the custodial, um, obligations themselves. So they will have certain criteria from Travis and Sean to, you know, take care of all of our custodial needs and then do their technology. So I took a typical thirty-five dollar, I think is, is in the fee for custodian at six point five hours. Again, times the fifty-two, that was about ten thousand nine hundred and twenty. Actually added the additional personnel number at thirty dollars an hour. That person, again, won't be there, they are responsible for it. But that comes to about a little over ninety-three hundred. So that total to me was fifty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. So that's where that round number of sixty thousand came. If you want me to go back and talk to Zach about the very specific hours that they will be in each of those places, I understand. Well, I took the six and a half hours at the highest number, which was the one twenty-five. Again, with, with the information of I, I won't be in all three spaces for six and a half hours each time. So they got charged the highest number per hour. They al- they also got charged the custodial fee and personnel fee, and those people won't be there. Um, that's as much a staffing issue in our end, but they had no qualms about that. They will also pay the additional fifty dollars, like I said, for however long the training takes. And, you know, they understand that we can terminate this at any point. If they are not cleaning up to our standards, they are responsible, as you read, for like snow removal. Um, so the, that's where the numbers Denise had. Fair questions, but I, that's not just sixty thousand, 'cause it feels good. That's how the math came, so.
I feel like it would be prudent, um, to itemize, like Denise's request. Um, if, if this agreement does have limitations on the additional rooms, then I think that is worth noting. Okay, so you're not paying for six and a half hours for these additional rooms, but you are paying for three hours at this rate for these rooms. And I think that that should be outlined in a contract. If for no other reason than it's very important from a liability standpoint in the event that someone is in one of those rooms that they did not have contracted hours for, that they are not paying for, but something happens, then that's a problem.
Yeah, that, fair. They, they, in the contract, they are responsible for all four areas, or three, the two choir rooms, Mustang room, and auditorium.
So then it comes to be either they are one hundred percent responsible for the entirety that they are renting those, and they will pay for that accordingly, or they are not responsible for it during those hours, which they are not paying for.
What did our attorney say? I'm sure that you don't really.
Yeah, they, I mean, of course, everything in any contract goes through their attorneys, our attorneys. So Michelle and I have been working close with allers on all the drafted language, so I mean, they have our, I, I, they don't have our fee schedule, right? But they certainly, there's as much allers as anything else in this agreement, so they're aware. We use, you know, you guys probably don't, we use our gyms for, you know, lots of things, uh, our classrooms are used and paid for different things. Churches have certainly been a, they're very prevalent in schools, right, where they, where they run. We've had it in the past, and I think it's been a while at DCG, but, so.
I don't think that's, for me, that's not the issue.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just making sure that we are being fair with how we're charging. So if any other group came in, would they get the same?
Yeah.
You know, I, for me, that's the bigger issue.
I understand the item is that, there's, there's no doubt the fairness piece is happening, but if that means an itemized, then I'll go back to Zach, and Zach, it went from sixty to sixty-eight, there's certainly a possibility that I go back to Zach and say it went from sixty to fifty-two. You know, I mean, it could, it could go down just as easy as it can go up, so.
But then it's just being accurate too, like I just, you know, um, 'cause I, you would think that they're using more than one room at a time if they're having church and Sunday school at the same time, or I, you know, I don't know what their, their plan is, but, um, yeah, that was just. And then how, how does the access part work? So since we won't have an employee, district staff there, how does that work for them to access?
Yeah, so they will get, they'll get specific access to like, um, the custodial closet that they'll need, those things. That we can, we can either key card them at certain times or program the high school to be open at certain times during the, you know, it can be open.
So it's all automatic, those are like, like keys that you're handing out or anything like that?
The, the only keys I am, would be handing to them would be those specific rooms that they would have to get into.
So those are not carded, those are key, literally keys that they could take and.
Yep, yep, the building is carded, the actual room is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have another question, um, pertaining to the holiday clause in the facility usage in the contract. Um, so it says that there will be an additional fee for holidays, which are specifically verboten in policy. Um, and I'm curious what that fee is?
If they, if they did, they wanna have church on a, on a holiday or a Saturday, then we would charge the per-hour fee in addition. You know, it'd be like a normal Sunday fee of eight hundred and twelve, whatever I listed to that Saturday. And great question I make, is I also wanna make clear in here, 'cause it's in district policy, and of course Zach understands this as well. Fifty-two is the appropriate number as we're doing math, fifty-two weeks. They won't be in there fifty-two weeks, 'cause school still takes top priority. So they will not be in there for musical weekends, they will not be in there for prom weekends, a pre-arranged, um, you know. Sometimes we have, the, the dance team rents it out or like already on the books, so it'll be the majority of Sundays, but they are paying for a year, and it won't quite be fifty-two weeks, 'cause school's still gonna win and.
So if something comes in later, let's say we do put this contract through, and someone comes and needs that, that is a, a district event, that takes precedence.
Correct, yep, absolutely.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong on the fee schedule? That's like a one-time use fee schedule? I'm assuming, so if I wanted to use it for one time, right, I would assume that would be the fee schedule?
It does not say that it's a one-time fee schedule.
Yeah, I mean, it would be.
If I wanted to rent out for one weekend, this would be the fee schedule?
Yes, but it also could be reoccurring though. It's like our gyms for youth, youth basketball.
Yep.
There's gonna be a rolling, that's not a one-time, that's a, we use it for four days a week for four hours a night.
But they still pay the same.
I just wanna say, so as, as you're going out to longer and longer contracts, typically, you're, reduce the fee schedule. If I'm, I'm assuming most people aren't signing year-long contracts to guarantee dollars to the district. So instead of saying, I'm gonna use it for two weeks, I'm gonna use it for a year, I'm assuming that's also probably taken into consideration based on those numbers. It seems like this is also on the higher end.
I think that would be a very bold assumption, given that we've already had board approval for a fee schedule without any sort of stipulation on a year-long contract.
I think that's why this, the policy has this right, it has, it's right in here. We don't have to cherry pick certain things out of it, it's right here, it's right in the policy. Note, the superintendent and/or board, maintenance discretion, approve other uses and set fees accordingly.
We haven't had that discussion yet, though.
That's what we're doing right now, so, yeah.
Precisely.
So I think what, setting the fees is what Dr. Bloom is proposing on the special use.
I think it's also prudent to remember that we set the fee schedule in July, so we're a month ahead of setting a fee schedule for the upcoming year and when this would come into play. So I think it would be prudent to table this until we have come to a decision on whether or not those fees adjust up or down based on our needs for the, the upcoming year.
Do you know if that's gonna cha- do we have any?
No, I've not.
We don't know if that's changing. That was, yeah, something else I was remembering up, is that, the end of next month.
I don't see any reason it is, but I also have not talked with Madison in advance. I'm not sure if Madison maybe has her feet under her to need to worry about raising or lowering these fees. I'm sure she'll come to Michelle and I for guidance, and I have not heard, one way or the other, that these are too high, too low. So I think a, a fair starting point is probably at the same number.
Yeah, I think it was contemplated in the policy that you're gonna have instances where you're gonna have people come in and whether it's over a long period of time, or there's different situations that are at play, you're gonna, admin team and whoever that user are gonna work together. You're gonna come up with, I think Dr. Bloom walked us through the calculation, it's not arbitrary. I think there's a little bit of give and take on this. They can't be here every Sunday, because we've got things that we know that are gonna get in the way. There's things that may come up that'll get in the way. We don't have staff. We don't have staff. It's not reasonable for us to have staff or affordable for us to have staff like we would typically have, and so there's kind of give and take on both sides. So I understand in this particular case why we deviated from um, the schedule and kind of more negotiated to a number, so personally don't see an issue with it. I think that's why the policy was written the way that it is, because you're gonna have situations that are gonna just be different, and I think this one's just different.
It does help the cost that they are not there. I did not know that they were not going to be there every week, so that does probably bring that cost down if you're actually looking at it by each item, but I still think it would be. And maybe it's just something where we put in the contract, like what, like what you said, like that wasn't in the contract. So I guess it, it was, it would have been nice to have that information, I guess, on how that was, how, how did the sixty thousand even come about, so, um, maybe that's something we just add into the contract so it is written down, not just, you know, in a board meeting that we talked about, but.
Well, a contract's a binding agreement, right? And it's there not only to protect us, but also to protect the uni, users, right? And so I think what you're asking is in good faith.
Right.
Right? And it's not necessarily to say, no, I don't approve of this. It's saying, I'd like more information. And the effort to be, I, if I had all of the same questions you all had and had some folks reach out to me and just felt like I didn't have enough information to be able to respond.
Yeah, and maybe this is the right or not time. These questions have to be asked publicly, especially when we have these but as I say, please reach out if you have questions in advance, so I can give you that information when you're getting those questions too. So if there's something that you see on a Friday night when you're reading this, text, email, so I can get you the information promptly in advance.
What other discussion is there?
I would like to see wording in the contract that states what Sundays we already know they will not be using, right? Musical Sunday, prom Sunday, whatever is already on the calendar, to have those blocked out.
I mean, that is a theme that did come up when we had the, I'm thinking, it was the last facilities meeting, wasn't it? Um, and trying to schedule the auditorium and
Mm-hmm.
that it's a very highly used space. And then we had the huge discussion about.
There was like double bookings and.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think that's something you put in a contract, though.
It would absolutely be something you put in a rental agreement.
And it's, it's in the contract.
It's already in the, it's already in the contract, section four.
I think.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah.
But dates change, so then you're gonna go back, you know, the, the musical changes, it has changed. So then you're gonna go back and say, sorry, this contract's null and void because that date's wrong.
The district has to give one week.
Says they have to give them one week in advance, so that allows the district to use it when they need.
If we had a set number of, if we had a handful, up to and including four weekends that the district will maintain for usage because of these events, then it's the CYA on the district's end, but it's also something that can help people who are reading through this with an itemized, like, there are enough people that were concerned about budgeting here. So if you have line items where people can go through and figure out how they arrived at this dollar amount, I think that's fair.
I think we're trading something away if we go that way. We have all the flexibility in the world under item B to restrict use.
Okay.
So I, I don't know why we would want to move to language that could potentially limit
Put us in a box.
the school district's ability to reserve it for its own use.
Okay.
Meg, can you clarify, what's your budgeting? You had a budgeting concern of this?
Budgeting was the wrong word.
Okay.
The, the, arriving at the dollar amount, right? The fee schedule and the application here.
Because I just.
So if it's not fifty-two weeks, it's actually forty-nine,
Yeah.
then that would be
Yeah.
something that would be very lovely to clarify for stakeholders.
Yeah, because
So this is, oh, sorry.
Currently, currently, right now, on most of these Sundays, nothing is going on, so this will be a little, little win in the general budget, right?
I agree, it's, yeah.
Yeah, look, I will do some math with Zach on to the best of their ability on hours in each place and just kind of see where that lands and share that info and one way or the other.
So this is going general fund, correct? Okay, and then it says it's paid quarterly. Does that first quarter come in before they start? Is there any type of down payment or something? Or is it just they go a quarter and then they pay? How does that work for the fee, the pay schedule?
Yeah, to my, my understanding that they were going to pay their first quarter prior, so like they were gonna get in and start using it at the end of September, they're not, actually would not have a service. I understand till maybe a few weeks later, so like the first payment would be made prior to like this, we're having our participants here, so early, early October would be like quarter one
Okay.
to be paid by the end of September twenty-six.
The, yeah, the last quarter would be paid.
Exactly.
And the anticipated attendance meets that fifty or fewer threshold for the fee schedule?
No, I'm sure it's gonna be more than fifty. I, I bet it's closer to a hundred, a hundred and fifty.
That is something that policy outlines too, that, um, for populations over a hundred, there are other expectations.
I believe it's just supervision.
Supervision that we're already letting out, but something worth noting that especially for use of the auditorium, if they're gonna have over a hundred people in there, then you would have to have additional fees if that's something that we have in policy. If we were going to pay for additional staff or additional custodians to do that, then in theory.
You said that's included.
We're not doing that. It's already included.
It's included, but we're not making them
Correct.
be there, which is.
We're making them do the custodial work.
Okay.
Yes.
We're charging them and they're doing the work.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
What other discussion? I'll move us along to vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, any abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll move us along.
I'm sorry, I have to review the nays.
Meg and Nancy.
Yep.
Okay, um, moving us along to item, do you have, wait, I'm sorry, do you have what you need, Michelle? Okay, moving us along to item G, equipment, breakdown, insurance. This was, uh, the presentation that, uh, Michelle and Sean walked us through earlier. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Lombard.
Second, McNace.
Any discussion? I, I just have a comment. I want to thank Michelle and Sean. I, I think you know, school finance is complicated and, you know, there's funds that are limited and um, and when we're have the ability to find something that we can levy for, like management fund, that we don't always have a, a intended use for all what we can levy and we can move some dollars out of general fund and move that to management fund. Those folks that are watching, that probably means nothing to them. It means a whole bunch to us and the flow-through is it, it means that there's, uh, more money available in the general fund to pay teachers, give them raises and educator kits, and so just a big thanks to Michelle and Sean because I know that's a lot of work to go and put a full year preventative maintenance schedule together on eight hundred pieces of mechanical equipment. That, that doesn't happen overnight, so uh, we're really fortunate to have the staff that we have here at this district and, and just want to pass along a big thanks to you guys. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item H, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year district and building goals. Uh, so this is the presentation that Dr. Corinza walked us through around the updated goal set. I don't believe any of the long-term goals changed, uh, but we had a couple of, of changes in the twenty-five, twenty-six short-term goals from last year. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Baker Curtis.
Second, McNace.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to financial statements, um, the financial statements that Michelle walked us through, just a bit ago. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Lombard.
Second, Vandervelden.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item J, board commendations. Um, still have four pages even when school's out. That's a pretty good deal, so, looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Viella.
Second, Baker Curtis.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, I'm gonna move us along to item eleven. This is the closed sessions requested by administrator regarding superintendent eval. Uh, Michelle, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to move to close session.
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. I move to enter into closed session to discuss superintendent evaluation.
Second, Viella. I was, I was reading the top part.
I'd be so excited. This is a roll call vote.
Director Baker Curtis?
Hi.
Director Davis?
Hi.
Director Viella?
Aye.
Director Lombard?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director McNace?
Aye.
Director Vanderbilt?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session.